I forgot the last time. Okay, folks, it's 7 o'clock and I call the joint meeting of the planning board and the Board of Selectmen to order. And I want to welcome everybody who's here. I'll tell you what the agenda is in a way because it's spelled out sort of. We have a report by Judy Barrett of our KG Associates. And this is, in my estimation, a really excellent study on the housing needs in Falmouth. And you note I say "housing needs." I do not say "affordable housing" because it is the whole perspective of housing as a community that we need. Now, what we are going to do is have Judy's report and then we will ask the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board will ask Judy questions. We're not going to have general discussion tonight, but if you have questions over her report. We have their report in front of us. It's dated the 12th. I don't know how many people have had a chance to really study it or not because it's relatively new. What is it, 11 days old? And so this will come up later for our joint discussion as to how it applies to housing in Falmouth. But we first have to have the presentation to know what we're talking about. And so that Judy can meet -- this is Judy. So that she can meet and know the members of the two boards because I do not know how many people she does know. Can we please just start and start with you, Julian?
Julian Suso, Falmouth Town Manager and Patterson Selectman.
Susan Moran, Selectman.
Mary Buckland, Chairman of Board of Selectmen.
Kenneth Baderas, Planning Board Member.
Douglas Brown, Planning Board.
Tim Fox, Vice Chair, Planning Board.
Pat Kerfoot, Chairman.
Bob Leary, Planning.
Bob Hurst, Planning Board.
Nice to meet all of you. This is great. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Judy.
Do you want me to just jump in or did you want to?
Just jump in.
Okay. Just to clarify, I'm actually still doing a little bit of editing to the report so the final, final, final version I will be submitting to Marlene. I think we had agreed on Monday, the 29th. But the executive summary is, I mean, the content of the report isn't changing. I'm just tweaking it a little bit. What I have tonight are some slides that kind of go a little bit deeper into some aspects of the report than the executive summary, which I think many of you have seen. I'll double back to the executive summary when I get toward the end of these slides. But I'd like to sort of take you on a walk with me through some of the information that we found as we worked on this project. So we're going to cover several topics as the report does. One is just the sort of demographics of the town, what your employment base looks like. Those things have a relationship in the report, which I'll talk about a bit. There is an extensive residential market analysis in the report which helps to shed light on housing needs in the community, including but not limited to affordability. There is, of course, a discussion about affordability. I think it's a little bit difficult to talk about housing needs without these looking at that and affordability at different tiers of income levels. Some issues that I think the town probably needs to look at in attempting to address the needs that are identified in the report, some opportunities to do so, and then recommendations kind of specifically that we have made. So that's sort of the overview of the report and pretty much an overview of the presentation. Key findings. First of all, I have to tell you that almost anything I'm going to say tonight is probably not a surprise to anybody in this room. You've had a slight population decline. I'm measuring most of these population indicators, by the way, through the decennial census, the official 10-year census. There are some data sets here that actually come from a related instrument that is published by the Census Bureau called the American Community Survey. That is actually an every-year estimates, but the population and household, the main indicators here are actual counts from the decennial census. So between 2000 and 2010, you had a bit of a population decline. You had a bit of household growth. What that probably tells you is that your households are getting a little bit smaller, so there is housing demand. Population growth or change is, in most cases, not as important for a housing study as what's actually happening with the number of households in your community and the size and composition of those households. Your growth is projected to be fairly slow over the next decade, about 1.8%. And what you've seen certainly in this community, I think, is a dramatic growth among retirees and older households generally. Looking a little bit more specifically at some of these age trends, this is sort of a bar graph of what's been happening with your, your population over the last 30 years. And so what you have here are these different bands of color indicate different age cohorts. And so you've kind of gone from a set of, you know, age mix that's fairly typical for what a lot of communities looked like in 1980. And what really has happened here is that there's been tremendous growth among people over 65. So they're increasingly a larger, larger band relative to, to the entire town. And again, I don't think this is really any surprise to anybody here, but I just want to document for you that you are really a very attractive town for a lot of people my age and older. And that's, you know, can be seen in your demographics. It's also evident in the age of your households. And again, I want to just point out that for a housing study, household composition and size is really more important than population. What this does is it gives you a sense of how the percentage of these different age cohorts has changed over, you know, relative to the United States and Massachusetts. As you can see, the, you know, the oldest cohorts are the 65 to 70, 75 to 85, so it's basically this color up. So in your town, this is how, this is the relative percentage of households that are 65 and over, whereas in the United States and Massachusetts, they make up a much smaller band. So clearly, you know, your community is very attractive to, to older households that are, that are settling here. And for the most part, they are also spending more on housing than many of your year-round or traditional longer-term residents, as we will see in a little bit. So population projections for your town up to 2030, there is an estimate from your, from the Massachusetts State Data Center that your population is going to continue to drop a bit while meanwhile it's going on all around you, including a bit at county level. But your population is estimated to continue to drop a bit. And what I don't have unfortunately is a table that is relatively, is the same as this for households. But I can just tell you, based on other data sets that we looked at, that what this, what's happening here is that your, your population will continue to fall, but your households will grow a little bit, a little bit. You're getting smaller and smaller households. And that, that's because you're getting predominantly older households. So I don't think there's any big surprise here, but, but it certainly suggests something about perhaps the kinds of housing they need when you have a predominantly older population and smaller households. Prospects out, this is just another way of thinking about what's happening here up to 2030. One of the things we look at in housing studies is something called an age dependency ratio. And it's the relationship between the dependent population, which is people under 16, and 65 and over versus the people who are generally considered to be in the labor force, which is 16 and 64. So your age dependency ratio is a bit high. It's gone up, no surprise. What that ratio means is that for every one person in the labor force, you have .71 or .76, as the case may be, dependent population. As you carry out your population projections to 2030 and you look at the age mix, your population, of course, will continue to drop as I, at least is estimated to continue to drop by about 2.9%, but the population 65 and over is going to increase by 50%. So by the time you get to 2030, what your age dependency ratio looks like is, is overwhelmed, which means that you'll have fewer working-age people than you have actually the number of dependent, so-called dependent folks in your community. That doesn't, what it really is telling you is that the labor force, the economy of the town will be shaped dramatically by those two bookends, less and less so by the working-age population, which is basically carrying, you know, more, more than their fair share, if you will, of the, of the local economy. Households and families. One of the things we look at in housing studies is what's the composition of your households. So as I said earlier, your number of households went up 1.5% over the last decade, but the actual percentage of families as the percentage of all households went down a little bit. And just to be clear, this will all change by 2020, but for now, when we talk about families from the census definition, we are talking about husband-and-wife families and single parents. These definitions are changing significantly because of changes to regulations under the Federal Fair Housing Act. So one of the things that I cover in the report but did not exactly put in all of these tables is that, excuse me, I need to gain for those numbers to fall down, but I think you can probably read them. We also have partner relationships, partner families as well, which the Census Bureau currently does not classify as a family. It's already political right, but it will change. So you actually probably have more families in your community than what the Census Bureau was counting. But nonetheless, the percentages or the numbers of traditional family makeup are gradually decreasing here because you're having more and more older households, including single retirees, which is one of the reasons why as your population goes down and your number of households go up, you still have housing demand even though it's not coming from population-driven numbers per se. Stop me, by the way, if I'm going too fast or if I confuse anybody. But, you know, your trends here are a bit different from what's going on around you. And that's the other thing I wanted to just point out. You know, more in the percentage of, the household growth rate is expected to be greater, certainly in Mashpee, in Sandwich. I'm just trying to look at the other towns on the upper Cape and compare you to them. And in many ways, you really are, are different. Your family percentage is going down, yet in Mashpee and Sandwich it's expected to increase. So you're a kind of a niche market here. No surprise, your households are relatively small compared with other geographies around you. Your average household size of 2.21 people is about consistent with Barnstable County. It's smaller than the state. Again, no surprise, I'm sure, to most of you, but the county statistics tend to be, you tend to be closer to the county statistics than the smaller towns around you. You are more like the town of Barnstable. You're the two largest population centers, so naturally the county data tend to be skewed by what's happening in Barnstable and Falmouth. So it's not all that surprise that you're, that you're closer to the county statistics. In any case, your households are certainly smaller than in the towns around you and your families are as well. 2.77 people per family and 2.21 people per household. Those are small households. Makes you wonder why people build gigantic homes. You still have very small households living in them. Household and family incomes. You are kind of a little lower than the state, a little over Barnstable County on your median household income. Your median family income kind of follows a similar pattern. You're a bit over the county and under the state. I just want to sort of point out however that median household and median family income, although they're useful parameters for thinking about housing affordability and so forth, they really need to also be paying attention to the, the composition of your households and how incomes vary. One of the things that we are seeing increasingly, more so, I think, in your town than some of the other communities up here, but trust me, it's just the anomaly of where you are in many other parts of the state have seen the same thing, where in the, traditionally, we've always thought of single-parent women as the poorest of the family households and certainly statistically they still are, but in many communities, the households that were actually being given to see more of and also households that are struggling for are single-parent, you know, households. So you've actually had growth in both of those areas, but those are households that have particular needs for affordable housing that differ quite a bit from married couple families and others. So the picture of median family income and median household income can be a bit of a distortion. Doesn't really tell you what's going on with all your household types.
That's a plenty surprise to me that the Falmouth one-parent female income is 38 and the one-parent male is only 26.
Thus saith the American Community Survey estimates for your town. This is not the only town where I've seen this. I think there are a variety of reasons why sometimes you'll tend to find single-parent women households just at the median anyway, being in somewhat better economic position than, than men. It has to do with, you know, everything from who's paying child support to just, I think, the particular circumstances that cause families to, to end up being headed by single man, single woman. So, you know, beyond that, I really can't comment on it except to point out, I just want you to know, we are seeing more and more single-parent male-headed households in this country. And you've certainly had growth in that as well. But they also often are a household type that has particular needs for affordable housing and they don't necessarily get recognized because we're so used to thinking about women with children and elderly women. But the dynamic is changing is what I want you to know. And you can see it in your town. Sources of income, this is another interesting little factoid about your community, where people are drawing their income from. This is just a reinforcing set of statistics, I think, for the fact that you have older households here. Of the households in your town, 42.8% are drawing on Social Security and 25% on Southern, 26% on some type of pension, but the corresponding statistic statewide is about 28% Social Security and 16.2% Pension. So, you know, it's just another way of thinking about the age mix of your community. Why are you saying this? Because you have predominantly older, older households. But another little thing I want to just point out, it isn't so much age-related, but rather, I think, the region in which you live, is the percentage of households that also have self-employment income. And I've just seen this elsewhere when I work on the Cape, that because you have so many households that are kind of stringing together a way of life from two or more sources of employment, it's not uncommon to find higher percentage, wider percentages of families with self-employment income on the Cape. Actually, this is true in other vacation resort areas of the Commonwealth as well. South Berkshire County, I've seen this as well. It doesn't mean that their entire source of income is self-employment income. The survey is where do you get your income from? So you're identifying all the possible sources that your household derives income from and in your community. The number is up for, the percentage is up for self-employment income relative to the state. And I think it's just another little indicator of what, what means to live on, on the Cape and that people kind of have a different lifestyle here. So what can people look for? I'm asked this question all the time. And I thought, I'll just get the income limits up here so we can dispose of this and then also think about what, what is actually affordable at these different income levels. As you probably know, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Urban Development once a year publishes, quote, "income limits" for a variety of housing subsidy programs. And those income limits relate, are reported in three tiers. One is for people who are very low-income, which is generally at or below 30% of the median for your area. The low-income limit is 31 to 50%, and then the moderate income is 51 to 80%. So these are the standard income limits that apply in your area, at least for this year. The income limits are interesting. What's affordable is probably even more interesting. People tend to focus on the household of four, the mythical household of four. That mythology kind of goes back to, I think, Leave it to Beaver, and we really need to dispose of it because it is not what our typical household is today. Most of our households that really need affordable housing are not moderate income households of four. They're just not. It's a number that gets thrown out there. I think it gets thrown out there because it's a feel-good number. Most people would say, oh, well, households making $64,000 a year, they're, they're worthy. We don't talk about the household of four that is making $25,000 a year. But in fact, what we find in affordable housing studies over and over and over again is that the most housing cost-burdened households, people who are paying way in excess of their income on housing, those who are most housing cost-burdened and those who are the most numerous in terms of need are actually people who are in the very low and low-income levels. And they're not necessarily households of four. They may be households of one. They may be households of two. So all of a sudden, what you think might be an affordable housing cost of $1,500 suddenly drops to 644. And so it's something to think about when you're trying to plan housing needs is don't get too caught up in the feel-good number because the feel-good number is not necessarily where the rates are really at. And certainly in the report, we talk about where your most housing cost-burdened households are in this community and they tend to be smaller or family households and they're not at the moderate income level. They tend to be actually in the middle band. And also, something else interesting about your town that's different from many in which I've worked is that you have a larger percentage of homeowners who are housing cost-burdened than renters. In many parts of the state, it's the opposite. It's the renters who tend to be, just statistically, the renters tend to be more housing cost-burdened. But I think in your community, because there's so little rental choice frankly, and, and the housing prices that are happening in your market on your homeownership side are really catering toward a group of homebuyers who are not necessarily the traditional year-round folks in your community. So those who are left, it's very expensive for them to find a place to live here. Anyway, just to have, we come back to this, we need to. But I just sort of, I want to just point out that because you're a town with small households, it doesn't make a lot of sense to think about affordability for a household of four at 80% of median. You probably need to be thinking about smaller households, probably those that are not way in the 80%. I think most people I've been working with over the last few months understand, as I'm sure you do as well, that housing is an economic development issue. They're really kind of inseparable. So one of the things we tried to look at a little bit in the report is just kind of what's the makeup of your economy and perhaps how does that relate to, to housing in your town and the cost to, to live here and where do people live who do work here? Your labor force, like every other community, your labor force fluctuates. 17,000 to 18,000 people is sort of the fluctuation band here. Your employment base also fluctuates some, but if you think in terms of 15, 5,000 to 16,000 jobs, that's about, you know, it's pretty difficult for what, what you've had over a period of time. In the last five years, I realize it's 2014 and not 2012, but the most recent year for which we had annual employment data is 2012. So in that five-year period, you've actually lost about 6.7% of your employer establishments and 1.6% of your jobs. Not all that unusual. We have in fact been through an economic event since 2006 that has left a lot of local economies not in great shape. But just to point out that you have lost some employers and you've lost some jobs. One of the things that I looked at in the study, as we typically do in a housing report, is what is the ratio of the jobs in your community to housing units? Typically, what you do is you look at the total number of jobs and the total number of housing units and you just draw a ratio. But in a vacation community or a seasonal community, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense because there's a chunk of your housing stock that really is not available for year-round employment. So even deducting that, your ratio is quite low. And what that ratio means is that there's about one job per housing unit in your town. What we try for, if you're sort of trying to shape an economy that relates more to the size of your housing base, is something more like 1.5. What that does is it gives your residents some choice. 1.05 is basically one, it's basically one job per household. So if you can't find exactly the job that you want or that you're qualified for here, it might be difficult to find employment in your own community. Housing, I think, most people understand here seems to be somewhat of a, I'll use the word impediment, but it's a challenge in any case for economic development in your town. And that's kind of what that ratio would typically indicate, is, is your employment base and your housing base more or less complementary? And they're very tight, is what this suggests. Your employment base grows a lot in the summer, no surprise, I'm sure, to any of you. However, most of the gains in employment that happen seasonally are in industries that don't necessarily pay high wages. It's accommodations and food service, it's retail, it's entertainment and recreation. Those are the industries that tend to experience the most employment growth in the, in the And this is just kind of a little snapshot of your employment base, looking at it a different way. One of the things we typically look at when we're doing an employment base analysis is something called a location quotient. And here's what a location quotient is. I'm going to try to explain this as clearly as I can. You look at all of the jobs in your community by industrial sector and you figure out what percentage each sector's jobs are of total. And you do the same thing in what we call a reference economy. Could be the county, it could be a metropolitan area, it could be the state. People use different reference economies for different reasons. You determine the percentages for the industrial sectors in your reference economy and then you simply take a ratio of the local percentage to the, I'll call it the regional percentage. And the result is called, this thing called the location quotient, gives you a little sense of where or what industries in your community are strong versus ones that are probably a little bit weak relative to a larger economy. And so what you, and then we try to look at, well, what are the wages in those industries that are strong? And so do you have a base that actually provides? It's one thing to say you've got a jobs-to-housing ratio of 1.05. It's another thing to actually have a job base that provides enough jobs and an income or wage level that would actually make housing affordable to a wide variety of workers in your community. Your location, a location quotient that's roughly 1.2 and up would be considered something that's strong in your economy. And something that's kind of below .80 would be considered sort of weak. Now, that said, I want to just tell you that it's not uncommon in vacation and seasonal communities to find a very high location quotient in things like arts, entertainment, and recreation. I think it's kind of different. So if I were comparing you to Southern Berkshire County, I'm not sure that these location quotients would look quite the same way. You probably have more ones in the mix. But, you know, relative to, you know, to the state, you are, you are very high in professional and technical services. I don't think that's any surprise here. You have quite an institutional base, you know, in the marine and other sciences. Public administration, which is local, state, federal employment that's based in your community, that location quotient is also high here. Manufacturing, healthcare and social assistance, there's a mistake in the report I've covered and I just kind of had a ratio that was wrong. But healthcare and social assistance is a bit up here, although not as much as I expected to see. And then arts, entertainment, and recreation also tends to be kind of high. So, so that's fine. Those are industries that tend to be prevalent in your community. They are industries that tend to thrive here relative to other parts of the state. Now, when you look at the wages, you say, well, this is good. I guess professional and technical services, those are high-wage jobs. There are 2,000 of them in the community. Public administration, they're fairly good-paying jobs. There are 1,400 of those in the community. Manufacturing, relatively well-paying jobs. You have 475 of those. If you're wondering why the location quotient is so high for such a small number of jobs, it's because manufacturing generally across Massachusetts is a small percentage of the total. Do you see what I mean? So it's all relative to some reference economy. Healthcare and social assistance jobs, some of them pay well, some of them don't. So the average wage, you know, is okay. It's not great. There's 3,000 of those jobs in your community. And arts and entertainment and recreation, you have 674 of those and the average wage is $518 a week. So, you know, you have a mix here. You have some high-paying jobs that are strong and a lot of, you know, other industries where there's quite a bit of employment activity taking place, but not necessarily employment that pays a living wage. Now, when you look at the industries where, where the sectors are not so strong in your community, they're mixed. Some of them are higher-wage employment and some are not. But anything that's kind of below .80 or .70, those are industries, we'd say, are underrepresented in the local economy. And frankly, that's most of, the major of those sectors outside of what's strong. You don't really have much middle ground here. I think the only industry I saw where you're almost kind of a one, which would be sort of normal, was retail. But everything else, you know, you're really weak. You don't have any information jobs, you don't have any finance jobs. Finance and insurance tends to be a fairly high, high-wage sector. You don't have much of that here. Educational services is lower than I expected it to be, but that's what it is. So, you know, there's kind of an imbalance. There's sort of perfect economy, there is no such thing. But when you see less skewing than this, you tend But when you see less skewing than this, you tend to see an economy that's sort of more like what's happening around it, getting its fair share of regional employment growth, getting its fair share of high and lower wage jobs. Yours is really skewed. You have some that are high and a lot that are low. I don't really think that's all that much of a surprise here. It would be hard for people in many of these sectors to afford to live in your town. And I surmise that it's very difficult for people who are in the lower-wage, strong industries to live here, and they may not even live here. So into the housing analysis now. That was sort of the demographic and employment base piece. And we always start with that, to try to get a sense of, well, who lives in this community? And what do your households look like? And how have things changed over time? What are the income mix? What do people do for work? Where do they work? That's all kind of the content at the beginning of the report. And then the report goes into, I think, extensive detail on what's happening with your housing market. This map, which I will probably come back to, trying to compare your village center designations from the... I don't know if you can copy exactly where you're going with that. With your census tracts. Census tracts, for those of you who don't know, are simply divisions in your community that the Census Bureau establishes in order to be able to make comparisons between areas that are roughly the same in terms of population. They're not necessarily the same in terms of area, but tend to be sort of the same in terms of total population count, so that you can get a sense of how are things similar or different within communities. So you have several census tracts. That's what the different colors are, different tracts up there. We're going to come back to this when I show you some other data from the housing portion of the report. Just wanted to be able to let you see that at a scale that's bigger than you're going to see it a little bit. There's a number of findings in the report about what's been happening with housing here since 2000. Single-family homes, to a lesser extent, condominiums have dominated the housing pipeline. Average single-family home assessment in your town is 481.3, but of course, it varies tremendously by neighborhood. I don't think that would surprise anybody in here. The land assessment townwide is about 56% of the total single-family home value, but it's much higher along the coast. If you are looking at a property that has recently been mansionized or new construction, the housing, the building value will be higher than the land. Essentially, what happens is the housing values are very high. It's because there's no other land to build on, and people want to be in the community. And so older housing stock in particular, the building value, will be much lower than the land. Those are places that tend to become tear houses. In the study, we focused on 20,970 housing units that lend themselves to comparison. And that includes the single-family base, the condominiums, and the very small multi-unit buildings, like two- to four-unit structures. When you get into properties that are bigger than that, they're very... They become very difficult to compare. There are just too many variables. So we looked at... We sort of focused on the report on that portion of your housing stock, which is basically about 95% of the total. So I think we did a pretty decent job of trying to cover what the base looks like. Seasonal housing here has increased by about 25%, according to the Census Bureau and also basically from a conversation with the assessor. It seems that seasonal occupancy is up as well. Did you have a question?
Yeah, the 25% since 2010, that's a huge increase. Or is that between the last sentence? I mean, the last census?
We are not sure.
That seems to be an astronomically high number.
It is a very high number. I think it's a combination of things. Number one, this is a census estimate. But we spoke with the assessor. Your assessor's wonderful. They have pretty good records about what is seasonally occupied. And actually, the number that's estimated by the Census Bureau isn't all that much different from what the assessor has. I think what you had is a combination of some vacancy.
My question is the word "since."
Yeah, I know.
So from 2000 to 2010, or from 2010 to 2014?
2010 to 2014.
That's an astronomically high number.
It is a very high number. And I think it's... What I was going to say is I think it's a combination of units that were vacant, that were seasonal occupied. But also, I'll tell you what I think is happening here, because I've seen it in South Berkshire County as well. It's another area of the state that has seasonal housing issues go over, is that when your base isn't growing anymore, and there's a demand for people to have a seasonal home in your town, what was year-round becomes seasonal. So which really kind of fits with the reduction in owner occupancy in this community over the last decade. I'm not going to tell you that the 25% is absolutely correct, because all I can give you is an estimate, but I don't think it's as far afield as it may feel, because you had a drop in your owner occupancy rate, your year-round owner occupancy rate. And you had an increase in vacant units. So I think some of this is just uptake of vacancy, and some of it is people can't find land to build a new vacation house on, so they're buying what was year-round, and they're converting it to seasonal. And of course, then you also have the dynamic of some housing that's been seasonal now being converted to year-round as well, by people who perhaps summered here forever. So it's a real mixed dynamic in your housing stock here. Your second home assessed values are generally higher than year-round homes. I don't think that's any surprise, but it is what it is. The supply, we were asked to sort of estimate, well, how many units of this town might be eligible for... Might be affordable to people who would be eligible for units in a Chapter 40B development? How many units do we have in our county? Always a big question, and it was one of the questions we were asked. So I'll just give you a sense of, in the homeownership world, a unit that's at or below $200,000 is roughly a unit that would be affordable to someone who is at or below 80% of the median, $200,000. According to your assessor's data, you have about 7% of... Little less than 7% of your base is valued at $200,000 per unit. Almost half of them are seasonal homes or rentals. They are concentrated in five neighborhoods. The relatively affordable units tend to be old. Another additional 15% of the base is valued between 200 and 250. What you're getting into there is affordability at 80 to 90, maybe to 100%. 14% valued at 250 to 300,000, affordability at maybe 110% of median, 64% assessed at or above 300,000, and only 47% of those are occupied as a residence, meaning a year-round residence. So there's a lot of complicated dynamics in this market. The bottom line is, yes, you have some units in your community that would be affordable to a household that's eligible for a homeownership unit in a Chapter 40B development. The units tend to be old. Just from a windshield survey assessment, I think there are some code or some standard issues in some of these housing units as well. So I don't want to paint a picture here that you've got a whole bunch of housing that's actually... That should be counted on the subsidized housing inventory, because I can't do that. I can only tell you that you have some units here that are lower value, below market. Your homeownership rate fell slightly between 2000 and 2010. The homeownership rate for older households increased. This is just back now to some of the demographic stuff we talked about a little bit earlier, but we're looking at it through the lens of the housing inventory. About two-thirds of your year-round homeowners are age 55 and over. 20% are 75 and over, according to the census. Homeowners under 35 fell to less than 4% of all homeowners in 2010. So you are losing those young workers, which, you know, kind of makes sense when you look at all the other data that we were able to find. You're losing that younger population. You're gaining older people. It's just another way of thinking about it in terms of the homeownership world. Your renters don't have a lot of year-round rental stock here. Your renters' median household income is quite a bit lower than your median for the town as a whole. I remember exactly median for the town as a whole is like 63, 64,000. You know, the renters don't have as much money. Unaffordable rent is about 840, but the median gross rent in your community, meaning gross rent, by the way, is rent plus utilities. So the median is 960, and over 20% of your renters are paying $1,500 or more. 26% are paying $1,000 to, you know, $1,499. So a lot of your renters are paying more than they really can afford, which is borne out in some other data sets that are discussed in the report. You have a shortage of rental housing, and you have people who need it, and they're paying more than technically they can afford. Yes.
Is this data based on the census or newer from 2010?
This is from the American Community Survey, which would be the newer data sets.
Okay.
And I want to just address this, because it's an important question. Up until Census 2010 through Census 2000, income and social economic data that we have came out of the decennial census, came out of a special run, the long-form survey. The American Community Survey has replaced all of that. So now, you don't actually get income information from the decennial census. It's coming out every year from the American Community Survey. The upside is that we're getting a demographic picture of our communities every year. It's a wonderful data set. The downside is that they are estimates. It's based on sampling. Census Bureau advises, and we did, that wherever possible, you use the, what's called the five-year set, which is basically a survey over five years, and they're taking the averages. They're bringing the incomes to current, you know, adjusting for inflation. And so every year, you're getting a five-year revolving update. Those are generally the most reliable data sets, even for communities that have more frequent data runs. There's one-year, three-year, five-year. Your town's big enough that actually you would get a three-year as well, but we didn't use that, because it's not as reliable as a five-year set. The five-year set just covers more people. It covers more time. It's a more unreliable source. So, you know, you have to just understand that they are estimates. But what no one really ever told us in the past is that everything that came out of the long-form survey was also a sample. So it really was an estimate as well. We just didn't call it that.
Thank you.
Seasonal housing, 77% of the net increase in housing over the last decade. Track 1456, which is East Falmouth, it's up here. I tried to put these stars here so you could code it to the map. This is a smaller version of the map I had earlier. East Falmouth had the highest percentage gain in seasonal housing. The highest absolute increase occurred here, which is track 149. It's Falmouth Village, it's what's whole. Can you see where I am here? In 2010, seasonal units, 32% of your housing inventory, and tracks 143, 147, had over 40% of the entire seasonal inventory. That is this area and this area. So what's happening is, in these other areas, you're seeing gains in seasonal housing, but these areas already have quite a bit. You following me? Seasonal... The demand for seasonal housing is permeating your town. No surprise, I'm sure, to any of you on the board of this. The Chapter 40B inventory, we looked at this, although clearly, you know, we did not limit the definition of affordability need in this study to Chapter 40B. Chapter 40B is not a needs number. 10%, if you get 10% for one of those communities that does, it doesn't mean your housing needs are met. It just means you've met your regional fair share. So it's kind of a mistake to think about Chapter 40B as an indicator of need. It's really an indicator of the market. Nonetheless, through Chapter 40B, you have developed some inventory of affordable housing, as many communities have. That inventory is a total of 794 units. We tried to look at, okay, you have this inventory, but how secure is it? Many older Chapter 40B developments are not affordable in perpetuity. Many of them are. Depends on... Some of the source was... It depends on a whole lot of factors. But we looked at this, because it became clear to us in working on the study, that you have some housing preservation needs here. And one of those needs is preserving the inventory that you have of deep restricted affordable housing. According to DHCD, you have some of your inventory that is going to lose its affordability restriction soon. That doesn't mean those units will suddenly become all-market. But it's something that you need to pay attention to. I had the privilege, I guess, of working... It was a privilege. It was a great town. With the Andover Board of Appeals about 18 months ago. Andover had been over 10%, and they worked very hard to get there. And one of their older developments had an expiring use restriction, and Andover's a pretty wealthy town. And so when the use restriction ran out, the developer said, well, I'm not going to keep this stuff affordable going market rate. And the town fell below 10%. And immediately, Andover had sewer issues. Everything was right for this. Immediately, two very large Chapter 40B developments arrived on the doorstep of the town of Andover, simply because they lost one development to market conversion. So it is really important to kind of keep an eye on what's happening with your inventory. And the question is always, who's doing that? And where's the capacity coming from? And whose responsibility is it? In any case, you know, you have some units that are slated to expire soon. They may not. The owners may decide to renew. They may not. They may decide to convert to market. It's something I think you want to keep an eye on. I didn't get a sense that your town is a place that's really worried about Chapter 40B developments coming in. Maybe there is some of that concern here. But certainly, you don't want to lose the affordability, the affordable inventory that you already created through comprehensive payments, I would imagine. Some of this inventory is at risk. So your actual need may increase. We just looked at sale prices. This is all out of the assessor's data. We looked at sales over the last few years and looked at the addresses of the buyers. And just a little interesting insight, whoever's word. The buyers with local, meaning Falmouth or right around your median area... Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. I meant to do this. The median sale price for local buyers, so-called, is somewhat lower than the median price for non-local buyers, which gets back to what I had mentioned earlier about the incoming population that is buying... The older households that are buying, you know, housing in your community tend to be somewhat more affluent set than their age-mates who are already here. I think that what you can see from the sale prices here of local versus non-local is that there really is a difference in buyout and their spending accordingly. So something that, again, I think also sheds light on who's being served by the market, the tap market activity that's happening in your town right now. Issues, housing needs. Okay. Now I jump back to the executive summary. Number one issue, I think, is kind of coming to terms with housing needs here. They're not limited, as you already know, to needs that would be identified as Chapter 40B eligible. I think, why do you folks know this? Because you're active in town government, you're involved in planning. You know what's going on here. I'm not sure how general public sees it. And my comment is simply that whenever you get into the realm of trying to address housing needs in a serious way, there's always a public education factor. That people really do think things like, well, we have X number of Chapter 40B units, so that must all be affordable housing. Well, no, actually, if it's a rental development that was done under the rules of the day, most of that housing may not be affordable. You know, a Chapter 40B development may create some affordable homeownership units, but most of the units are not necessarily affordable. Their market rate, for a reason, the subsidy is internal. So I just think that an issue for all of you, and I've even seen some of this just working with your town, is that people need to understand that if you want to actually address affordable housing need here through means other than Chapter 40B, you're probably going to have to spend a fair amount of time just on public education and trying to get the public to understand what the issues are. And so... And I, you know, I think a concern I have for all of you is where is the capacity going to come from to do that? You may find that although you all understand that there are needs in your community that are not met by ordinary operations of the market, that the public does not. And the public does not, and you need the public's support in order to intervene in the market and turn things around or create an effect... Have an outcome that the market alone is not going to create, that you may run into some resistance. And so thinking about how do you work with the people in your community to educate and inform them and have them embrace, pumped and embrace the same agenda, I think is a real tough call. You know, I work all over Massachusetts, and I have to tell you, I honestly... And I've been in this field for a long time. I actually wonder... That's...
Wow.
You know, there's nothing that's harder than working on housing. Nothing. It's the hardest... It's the hardest planning subject to address. I am sure that most of you have been in a meeting at some point in your life where somebody got up and said, well, I'm all for affordable housing, but... And if it hasn't happened here, it will. People don't understand. People think that if you're not working, then somehow you're not worthy of housing. People think that if you are a teacher, then I do deserve affordable housing. But I never, ever, either at the state level, even when I go to meetings that are sponsored by state agencies, I never hear anybody talking about the lady who serves your coffee at Dr. Miller's in the morning. I always hear about teachers, police officers, firefighters. I'm not knocking teachers, police officers, and firefighters. But I am here to suggest that the need is much deeper than that. And the deeper you go, the more complicated it is to address it. First of all, government has walked away from its responsibility to subsidize affordable housing in 30 years ago. And in order to address deeply affordable needs, you need subsidy. So just trying to address needs at a significant level, to be able to serve many of the workers who work in your town, is more complicated than just creating more housing. You have some small older homes. This is housing preservation's of their need that I looked at in the report. You have smaller, older homes here, some of which are substandard. They have relatively low tax assessments. They're lower value properties, they're not subject to a deed restriction. What happens when they sell is that they usually don't stay affordable. So there's a, you have to be a little bit careful when you think, well, we have some inventory of housing units that are valued at $200,000. Maybe we really have enough supply here. I suspect that most of you, if you bought a lower value home in your town, probably would do what just about anybody else would do, which would be to try to increase the value of it. It is what people do in the market. So you have this inventory, but it's not really secure. And certainly, I think you can all think of neighborhoods. I'm going to forget the day you took me around to a neighborhood where you could see all these nationalized homes and one little one, I didn't build ones, that you just knew, I mean, that one's going to go next. It is what happened. You have affordable units that count on the SHI, Subsidized Housing Inventory, excuse me. But there doesn't seem to be any systematic monitoring process here to ensure that the properties actually comply with their affordable housing deed restrictions. Different monitoring agents for different projects and some confusion about who's actually responsible for monitoring the units. This is a huge issue in Massachusetts. It is enormous. It is not just Falmouth. But I'm working for you and I'm your consultant and I need to tell you, you need to take this issue seriously. We have communities, not many, we have a few communities in Massachusetts that ran into a problem with their quote 10% status because they had affordable units that had not been monitored. And very smart developers who were looking to build through comprehensive permits know how to search and determine whether monitoring has actually happened. It's a big issue. So I think you need to think about who's actually monitoring your inventory. It may be mass housing, it may not be, it could be somebody that DHCD is sending, probably not. I think you need to do what a lot of communities have come to terms with, which is that you need to take responsibility for your own monitoring. But that takes capacity. It's your inventory to protect. So you have to decide how you're going to do that. So that's another housing preservation issue. And then a third is that, you know, just over sixteen percent of the units on your inventory are subject to expiring use restrictions, as I mentioned earlier. So there's a potential that you're going to lose some units that you currently have. So that's the second issue. Housing needs, understanding and getting the public to understand. The second is housing preservation, yes or no?
Were you able to determine what percentage Falmouth is at currently?
I actually think I had that. Oh my gosh, I didn't, it's...
Is that that 6.9?
I think so. I'm sorry. You know what? It's a terrible thing to say, but I am so not, I don't pay that much attention to the 40B inventory for the reasons I just said. So I should know that number. Did you say what it was?
Five, five-ish.
Okay.
I think it's 5.3.
Yeah. Five, six percent somewhere in there.
Thank you.
Sorry, I should know that off the top of my head. Okay, so let me go back. How do you create land? When your land is all used up. Zoning. Zoning can create land, zoning can take land away. Your single-family residential zoning does not really encourage a mix of housing types. No surprise. Most of Falmouth is zoned for large lot residential development and existing zoning provisions for affordable housing don't seem to work. Zoning effectively creates or constrains the land supply. It isn't clear to me that there's enough bond-based support to the community to change the zoning scheme you have. What you have has been here for a long time. And I simply point out that, you know, it didn't sort of happen in a vacuum. You've had predominantly single-family zoning here for many, many years. So to me, that's just sort of another aspect of this public education piece, that this is the community people move to, it's a community that they love. And many people are afraid to tackle those changes, to create a supply of housing, for any number of reasons. There may be concern socially, they may be concerned about the impact on their property value. There's all kinds of reasons that people get concerned about changing zoning. But this is something that is in your control. It is in your control. Zoning policy is squarely in your control. Chapter 40B may not be entirely in your control, but your zoning is. That said, I don't think, from what I've seen here, that yours is a town that's going to do a fundamental change in your land use policy. And I'm not suggesting that you should. I'm simply suggesting that this is something that's in your control and you need to decide how much you want, how much control you want to reserve. One of the things I heard here, I hear this everywhere, is concerns about the development review process and permitting. I heard concerns about just how long it takes to get permits and there's a perceived lack of coordination among boards and committees. The requirements are offered and owners are unpredictable. I think it was, I think it's always a good idea for every town to kind of look at, how do you do business? You can learn a lot from it. Have that conversation with the other boards that have land use responsibilities and just see how things are going. And you might actually learn that there are things that you could do better. And everybody could probably do better with permitting. Most towns I work in probably can say the same thing. I think the town boards here probably would benefit from kind of looking at their procedures and so forth. But I also think, from what I've seen and heard, that there's also, there's a need for some public education as well. That I think sometimes people assume that if something's taking a long time with permitting, then it must be that the board is just delaying things. And maybe the boards do delay things, I don't know. But sometimes what seems like a needless delay may be just the normal course of a public hearing. And I sort of direct this probably even more to you folks than the Board of Selectment. But, I mean, I've been in your seat and I've been on a zoning board of appeals now. And I think that sometimes people forget that when folks come to us for development approval, that we have a responsibility to the people who live around the site and also who are going to live in the development to do some sort of due diligence review, not just say everything's fine. So, but, you know, sometimes I think boards can get a little bit carried away too with imposing requirements that may not necessarily be necessary for every single type of project. So I think this is something you ought to look at. But I also think, just generally, some education, even with your developers, your applicants around, what does this really mean to come to a board and ask for permit? What are the board's expectations? Yeah, and make sure that your applications are clear. Do people actually have a checklist when they come to you? Do they know what you actually want? Do they?
No.
Okay, sorry. I shouldn't put words on. Just simple things like just checklists, you know. Really, I'm sure you probably have your own rules and regulations. But I work in many towns where planning boards and boards of appeal, planning boards may have subdivision regulations, but they don't have regulations for anything else. Zoning boards of appeal are required by law to have rules and regulations, often don't have them. So just kind of do an audit, I think, of how are you doing business as a land use board? And are there things that you could do a little bit better? And at the same time, I would say, if you're going to do any training, make sure you also invite the people who apply typically and their engineers and their lawyers and all those folks who probably need a little education too. Local resources. This was one of the issues that we looked at. You have an affordable housing fund here that you created by home loan petition a couple of years ago. I was a little surprised when I saw it. I think it could be a more useful tool for you. Several years ago, the legislature adopted or passed a law that has now become called the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Law. It's part of chapter 44, which is our municipal finance laws. Chapter 55C, excuse me, section 55C. And it creates an entity, if you adopt it at town meeting, that in a lot of ways can do things for you that would be very helpful, I think. A municipal housing trust can acquire land, it can hold land, it can be a lender. It can be a lender. I know that your current trust kind of allows that body to also provide funding for affordable housing. But the model, the trust model that the state legislature adopted, which was created by a number of housing groups that got together to try to figure out, well, what are towns need to have capacity? We have planning boards that know how to do subdivisions and special permits. We have confirmation commissions that understand how to regulate what happens. We have zoning boards of appeal that know how to, you know, approve an extension or alteration of a non-qualify single-family home and how to grant a comprehensive permit. We have boards of health that know how to interpret subject system plans. But we don't really have an entity at the local level that knows how to develop housing. And so the municipal housing trust law was passed to give communities a way to say, we're going to have a local development entity. Some towns that have an economic development and industrial corporation have an entity that's very similar to this. But I think, Julian, you had experience in a community that had an EDIC, if I'm not mistaken. So the point is just to have an entity that's nimble enough to be able to engage in the market, if something becomes available to be able to acquire or assist someone else in acquiring property without necessarily having to go to town meeting every single time some transaction has to happen. And some folks like the control of having town meeting, bless all these transactions. I'm here to tell you that that makes things harder, it kind of makes things harder. And so I'm just suggesting that if you want to get seriously involved in the development of affordable housing in a way that you're controlling it, would be to consider replacing what you have now with a municipal housing trust. And it's very easy to do. You simply adopt the statute at town meeting and then you also adopt a local bylaw at the same time. Many communities have used the local bylaw to sort of trim some of the powers that are in the state act. Most communities just simply create a local bylaw because it's what you should do. But it'd be a much more, I think, versatile tool for you. And again, I go back to what I said earlier about it's really hard to do affordable housing. It's honest to God the hardest thing I have seen in all my time in this business. People love you when you buy open space, they love you when you build new schools, they love you when you do all these things. But when you come to them and tell them that you're going to do affordable housing in their backyard, they don't love you very much. The last thing I want to point out, which actually I think is probably one of the first things I said in my executive summary. There's a lot of tension here in this town. It's not going to get you anywhere. I think that you have, you have a situation here where you're tackling a subject that's difficult on its face. If people don't figure out how to work together in this community, it doesn't matter whether it's my report or somebody else's, you are going to find it very difficult, if not impossible, to do anything significant about affordable housing. I think that you would benefit from maybe having kind of a summit with some of your developers, your nonprofit and your for-profit developers and your key land use boards and basically get on the table what's bothering people and have a professional facilitator kind of help you through some conflict resolution so that people can kind of move on. I just, I was a little surprised, frankly, at some of the tension that I saw here when I started working. When you drive into Falmouth and you don't know the town, it's this really pretty community and you think, God, these people are so lucky, right? They have everything going for them here. And you really do. But I think you need to do some work on how to work together better. So, in fact, I think that's probably one of the first things you need to do. Figure out how you're going to all work together. Well, I'm done. Questions?
Thank you, Judy. No, we're not going to take any from the public. This is the opportunity for the Board of Selectment and the Planning Board to ask questions of Judy about her presentation. And then I will remind people here that on October 1st, there is the, thank you, Blue Line at the library at 7 o'clock in the Herman Room. And that is when the public will have an opportunity to comment and question at that point. So I wanted to put in a plug for that tonight. Okay, so questions that people have. Jim?
If you could, I don't know if you could go back, but back in slide 10, there was another number that didn't make any sense to me. It was the male income in born being $95,000 and I just thought about it through the whole presentation and I couldn't understand where that number came from.
What turned us off now?
I just can't reconcile that number.
You know what it probably is? It's a good catch. If you have very few of something, very small universe, then anything in that universe will throw the statistic for the entire group. And I suspect what you're seeing here is a small number of male-headed households with children. So if one is making $150,000 and the other is making...
Anomaly, okay. I just, it was so much bigger, I couldn't reconcile, that's all.
I think you...
I want to know what they're doing, what's going on. So there's less of them, it's not a good thing, you're saying it's a bad thing, there's very few.
I'm saying I think that that's what's skewing the number.
Thank you. I'm sorry to regress.
No, it's fine.
But I couldn't shake that one out of my head.
That's fine.
Is there anything to do with that?
Yeah. Yes, Ralph.
Right, not so much a question of yours, Judy, but I think it might be, serve everybody here and the public to just give a one or two-minute review of how this all has come about. There are people in the audience that could address that. Why was this study done? Who solicited it? Who paid for it? How much was it? That kind of thing. I think that that's important, that everybody here understands why we're here.
Okay. You brought it up.
Well, I think there are people in the audience that could probably, that actually solicited the report to be developed. I believe Sylvia Skolton...
I can ask Sylvia to give a very quick summary of that. That is not really what we are supposed to be doing. So please be brief, Sylvia.
Okay.
Oh, come up there because we're being televised. Thank you.
Good evening. I was on the Affordable Housing Committee when this idea of a roundtable and the need for a consultant to help us was born and it's had the longest gestation period in history. Because here we are in 2014, but it's finally coming to fruition. We realized on the Affordable Housing Committee that we really didn't know what the town's needs were. We were supposed to advise the selectmen, but we didn't have the wherewithal. And here was the 2010 census coming down the pike. And we figured this was our opportunity. And we said we would like to have a roundtable because the concept is of a whole community coming together with no one at the head of the table. Because although I've only lived in this town for 14 years, I've been interested in affordable housing all that time. And I've never attended a community discussion of housing and its role in the future of the community. I've attended meetings in which people came out to oppose a particular project, but I've never seen the town come together to talk about housing as an element of the town's well-being. So that was the birth of the idea. And here we are, we hope on October 1st that everyone will come out. And I want to thank the selectmen and the planning board. Many of you will be there, you've responded to the invitation. And some of you will be participating on the panel. I hope that answers the question. I've got dates, all kinds of minutia that I could tell you. But I appreciate the question.
Thank you. Pat?
Well, I was really sort of blown away as I was reading through this. And I found the data very, very, very interesting and very telling. And then the, all the pieces in the end actually explained a lot of them. In terms of the demographic, we, our senior center group has been working over the last year to do a feasibility study for a senior center. And they, in essence, gave us kind of... And they, in essence, gave us kind of the same demographic that we would be looking at in 10 years. 60-some percent of the population will be 65 and older. And frankly, I find that demographic unsustainable. You even mentioned that for every senior center, senior, you have to have two junior, younger people providing the services for that senior. 20 years ago, I was actually, we created the Cape Cod Economic Development Council, and you may know Andy K. Mark from being on the tape. Eddie was an economist at the World Bank and has just enormous, enormous knowledge. And he used to say to us at the EDC, "If you don't do something about the demographic, we are going to end up being a community where the evil flies over, and that's going to be it." And I think what the data shows is that's where we are heading, and we need to reverse that. And I think the idea of groups coming together, you know, planning, zoning, economic development, it's going to take all of that to reverse the demographic and a whole lot more. But it seems to me that instead of focusing on what we see in front of us, we should be looking at how we can reverse it and make this a more viable community or a more collective group than what we're doing here. So that's, that's my reaction.
Yes, Ralph?
Yeah, I've got quite a few things that I'd like to say, and I'm not going to say them all right now, but I'll reserve some of them for the forum that's coming up. On page, on page 67, I think the crux of what is happening here is well spelled out, and it says that none of the ideas contained in this report can be carried out without a significant improvement in the relationship between the citizens, activists, developer staff, and town officials, which is what Judy said when she concluded. So I started with that, and she recommended that, so we agreed on that. I don't agree with everything that's in the report, and I have told Judy that, because I was the planning board representative to the Citizens Advisory Committee that was developed to oversee the report as it was going on. And it was very enlightening, and I felt very privileged to be a part of that. The Affordable Housing Committee was formed by the selectmen quite a few years ago to advise the selectmen. And they've done what the selectmen have asked, they have solicited this report. It was funded by money from the, through the Community Preservation Committee. And I feel as though the, this is the absolute opportunity for the selectmen to take the leading role in this town to promote affordable housing. Now, the Community Preservation Committee recommends money to the, to town meeting, and we get a huge amount of money every year, a portion of which must be spent on affordable housing, or as the legislation calls it, community housing, but it's basically the same thing. And just as an example, the Community Preservation Committee has somewhere in the range of $320,000 to $340,000 a year minimum to spend on community housing. So the CPC is a funding mechanism, and we're obligated to promote affordable housing along with other things. But I think that the, that the real, the ball is in the court of the, of the selectmen as far as I can see. And this, this report spells it out quite, quite well. If, if, for instance, I, I think that there's a couple of things that I think are absolutely crucial that were brought out in this report, and Judy didn't actually mention it tonight, and I'm surprised, but she talked about having a, in the report on page 59, a housing coordinator. A housing coordinator. This town needs a housing coordinator. Sylvia Sculpin has been an advocate of that, and I am too. And if you were to hire a consultant, let's say, maybe not necessarily an employee, but a consultant, and pay them $2,000 per month to monitor the inventory, okay, to promote affordable housing and to move it forward and to hold sessions where people got together and we improved our communications and so forth. If you did that, $2,000, $2,000 a month, that would be about 7% of what the Community Preservation Committee has, has to spend as a minimum every year, okay? So wouldn't that money be well spent? And couldn't you evaluate that after one year? It seems to me that it makes all the sense in the world to incorporate some of the recommendations that are in this report and do it, do it now. But I think the Board of Selectmen has to take the lead on this, and the ball, the ball is in your court. The planning board is also responsible, and that's us. There are recommendations in here for zoning changes. We've already taken one small step that will be brought in the fall town meeting to improve the availability of affordable housing in public, public land. I will say on pages 10 through 12, that we talk, the report talks about ethnicity and...
Point of order. I thought we were just supposed to be asking questions. Ralph, I'm going to interrupt you because I haven't heard a question yet. I've heard comments, and we are supposed to be having questions of Judy while we have her availability here.
Well, I'm going to question why she's put this in the report.
Okay. But out of your comment, I would like to ask Judy a question, and that is, where Ralph said maybe for a couple of thousand a month, we could hire a part-time housing coordinator from what you found in Thalmann, in your studies. Would we need part-time or would we need full-time from the needs that you have determined? I don't even have a concept of the scope of what's needed that a housing coordinator could handle.
I'm just thinking about the other communities I know that have one. I think you're probably thinking somewhere in the vicinity of three-quarters time, just for the town, the size of the town, the size of the inventory, and the issues here. You know, the housing coordinator could do a number of things for you. Monitoring the inventory is just one piece of it. So I think that $2,000 a month is probably an underestimate of what you need to spend. I'm just thinking about the salaries of housing coordinators in other parts of the state, and how many hours they're working in the tasks that they're doing, and I think that's probably low. But I do think you need capacity, and I didn't get into it here because I referred to local capacity in my presentation, but you're absolutely correct. It is one of the things I said I think you need to look at, of actually having a qualified person who can work with you to, and with the planning department and your boards, to help take an affordable housing agenda forward. And monitoring is a piece of that.
Can I finish?
Change my statement to a question? Well, let's, let's let Ralph finish with his question.
Okay. Judy, I'd like to know why race, ethnicity, culture, and foreign languages or languages spoken are relevant to this report.
Yep, sure. In 1968, the Congress passed the Federal Fair Housing Act, and we are in an era right now where communities across the country are being required to update something called an analysis, analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. Any entity that receives federal funds from HUD is going through that process right now. The Cape Cod Commission, if not doing it now, will have to do it soon. And one of the things that you look at in trying to determine whether there is a discriminatory effect is whether your, the makeup of your population is roughly similar to that of a larger region. And the implication, of course, is if you have a significant under-representation of people of color, or people who speak other languages, people from different cultural backgrounds, that there's probably a housing impediment to inclusion in your community. So it's a fair housing issue.
I just find that hard to believe, frankly. I don't care whether the government says it or not. Doesn't make any difference to me what race, ethnicity, culture, or language or anything is spoken as far as affordable housing goes. You, your one recommendation you made was to establish the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, and I spoke to you about this previously, and the fact that the Community Preservation Committee, back in 2011, established the Thalmann Affordable Housing Fund, which does a lot of the things that Judy alluded to, but not, not all of the things. But it also has some pluses and minuses that I'd like to expound on, but I won't, I'm going to, I'll wait until the, for the public, for the public forum. But I, that's a very, in my opinion, a very controversial recommendation. But I really like your report, and thank you very much for your efforts.
Pat?
Like, just to kind of reiterate, you were suggesting that we really need to begin to look together as a community to resolve some of the tensions, to look at what policies we currently have that are not working.
Yep.
Whether they be in housing, whether they be in zoning, or planning, or leadership, whatever that might be. And if we were to all agree that this demographic is not sustainable, do you have any suggestions as to how we might work to reverse that?
Well, in the back of the report, this is actually the section of the report that I'm still really working on of the case studies, you know, there are things that one can do to try to develop a base of housing that meets other needs. And one of the reasons I suggested the housing trust is that I think you need a development entity, and I know you have, you have developed a capacity in your community, so this isn't a comment about new folks at all. It's just simply a recognition that, that there are things that a municipal housing trust can do and can qualify you for, in terms of funds, that might be very advantageous to you. I also think that if you have an entity that is making funding available, like a bank, to your local nonprofits or even for-profit developers, you know, the ability to hold a mortgage is more potent than the deed restriction. So just, I think really sophisticated your understanding about what you can do with a trust is really key. You know, the reality is, sometimes I think about towns with a very kind of niche market like this, it's really hard to turn things around. I'm working right now in Amherst right now, which is not a seasonal housing problem, it's a student housing problem. But when the supply is so out of whack relative to demand, it can be very difficult to kind of get to that tipping point where now you can say, "All right, we've got enough supply going here that, that we can actually expect to see some neutralizing of the demographic or working toward the demographic that we want." You may never really get there in terms of that much supply production, so all the more reason to have both your nonprofit partners, but also a public development entity that is controlling both the project, the development of the project, but also the marketing of it. You know, not to discriminate against people, but there's nothing wrong with saying, "We're going to try to, to provide housing for, for young families." And you market it accordingly, and maybe you get some other folks who buy housing, and it's not just the young families you want. But, but being able to kind of sculpt the marketing effort, I think, is key. Intervening in the stock that's being produced, I think, is really critical. When you're basically building a lot of large, single-family homes in a market where the demand is, is for wealthier retirees who want that kind of housing, that's really great, but that's not going to house your younger families. So if you want to have younger families, because I agree, if you have younger people in your community, or it's going to be a lot of old, us old folks who don't have anybody to take care of us, the, you have to think about building other kinds of housing. I think that's really the key, is just diversifying the composition of your housing base. Because if I'm a wealthy retiree, I want a great big, single-family home, I probably don't want a smaller, I don't want a townhouse necessarily, I don't want a condominium, I don't want attached housing, but if I'm a young family or a young adult, a single person who is trying to like work, stay in the town I grew up in, or move here because there are opportunities for employment on the Cape that I want, I don't want a great big, single-family home, but I can't find here what I'm looking for. So that is sort of a zoning issue, but I think it all, it's zoning and it's subsidy, both.
Sam?
Along that line, you mentioned subsidized housing. Could you give us some institutional models for providing subsidized housing?
I want to make sure I'm answering your question. Do you mean because there are so few subsidies left from the federal and state government, or what?
I'm looking for opportunities to institutionalize subsidizing housing. What, what are there, what's available?
Well, this is a roundabout answer to your question. A lot of towns I work in that have inclusionary zoning get into a, an unfortunate tailspin about how much of a fee a developer should be allowed to pay in lieu of creating affordable units. And everybody sort of figures, well, if they're not, if a developer doesn't want to create a unit, but instead just wants to write out a check, how do we get a one-for-one replacement? And what I try to advise my client communities is, if you have a housing trust fund, don't think about it as, as a one-for-one. If you have money in your fund, invest in multifamily development, because now you can get 50 units, because you're an investor, along with a lot of other investors, you end up leveraging more affordable housing production if you think of yourselves as, as basically a community development bank. You know, money's powerful, and for-profit and nonprofit developers are looking for it. So if you say, "Look, we're going to finance projects that are, that are intended primarily for, you know, for young families, then that's, that's our, that's what, that's how we're spending, that's how we're going to invest our, our portfolio, that's what we're going to build a portfolio of, we're going to do that kind of housing. We don't need to get involved in big, single-family homes. We don't even need to get involved in small, single-family homes. We're going to develop multifamily housing." Well, all of a sudden, the cost per unit is very different. So you can get farther faster by being in, by just thinking strategically about how you're going to invest. I think every town that has any kind of housing trust fund, whether it's a special act fund or a municipal affordable housing trust, the first thing you need to do is have a business plan for your fund. You need to think about how you're going to invest this money. If you just say, "Well, we'll do 10 buydowns this year," boy, that's an expensive way to do affordable housing. But if you say, "We're going to take that amount of money, and we're going to invest a certain amount of it in income-producing properties, we're going to have a percentage of it for, for basically for sale grants, and then we're going to keep some of it in reserve, so we're actually generating income to the fund," that's managing a fund. That's what banks do, that's what housing subsidy programs do, but you know what? Our towns haven't been taught to do that. So I think you have to get really smart about how you use the very limited resources that you have. You could do a lot, because you have money. We sometimes, I think, make the unfortunate assumption that the only thing municipalities can do is think of their role as a regulator. How do we change zoning? Well, I mean, there's things you could do here with zoning, but your real power is in ownership of land, like any other developer, and money. And don't lose sight of those tools, but you have to manage them.
Sue?
I am wondering, because I'm, I was driven by the comment about tension in the report. I thought it was, you know, kind of a really earth-shaking comment, and then in connection with what you're talking about now, sculpting the marketing effort, I think the key is really community outreach, and I know we have a forum coming up. So my question is, can we take, and this is kind of dense reporting, a few of us were talking about how we had to sit, to three different sittings to get through it. Maybe the PowerPoint, I think, is a great introduction. Can we distribute that to the community, maybe the village associations, even in advance of the forum? So that maybe, I think a lot of it is outreach, and if we want support for some of these zoning ideas and changes, town meeting and otherwise, I think you have to start now and invite, you know... and invite, you know, each community, and, you know, each village in, in terms of getting some input, inputs, some ideas, some sharing of information. So I just wanted to be, that would be available, maybe even to distribute in advance of the forum, and then continuously as we go ahead and have that available.
You own every product I've created.
Okay.
What I would like to do is, there's a couple of typos in here I want to fix before you distribute it, but, no, I just, you catch them, right? You know, you're going along, oh, I can't believe I did that. If you could just let me clean up a couple of the slides, then you, certainly, I'll give you a PDF of it, that way it'll be a universal share.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
And I'm also curious, when you say there's, there's tension, where was, where is the tension? Because we're pretty well up here.
Yeah, I do. When I started interviewing people here, I did like some small group interviews, I did one-on-one interviews, and everybody talked about what they're not doing, or what they're not doing. And when you hear that enough, you know, there's a problem going on, and everybody's sort of pointing the finger at somebody else. And I, and I don't want to, I don't think it's, I don't think the issues are located in any one place. I just think you've got, like so many other communities, everybody's got a little piece of the problem, and everybody's got a little piece of the solution. But I gotta tell you, literally in every interview group I did, I heard about problems with communication, problems with coordination, you know, problems between boards and so forth, and, and I, I just, I've been in this business for a long time, so my view is, it isn't all the town boards. It's easy to blame you guys, because you hold the key to the permits, right? But I'm sure that there would be, that there's probably some stuff that everybody can learn just by, like I said, doing an audit of your procedures. And meanwhile, I would say to the development community, they need to kind of look at their own expectations, too. Like I said, boards have an obligation, when they're granting permits, to the people who are going to live in a development and to the people around the development. And sometimes that creates a lot of frustration for applicants, but it's just the way it is. It's the job that we all have when we sit on a permit-granting board. So I think everybody's got kind of, to kind of look at what they're doing, but really, I just, I heard it over and over again, and I've seen it, frankly, even working on this project, just a little bit too much waiting to see what somebody else is gonna do. And you got, it's going to be hard enough for you to get your arms wrapped around housing development in this community in a way that gets you on a different course. It's gonna be hard enough. Don't make it harder by fighting with each other. Just don't.
I will throw a comment out, because Pat and I are probably the longest surviving members of the boards, if you want to put it that way. There has been a lot of tension. What we are doing right now, which has been monthly, every two months, of the meeting with the selectmen and the planners, is something really new and different in this town. And the communication that we've established, this is what Judy is talking about, and in housing, she is talking about including not only our two boards, but the kind of workshop that we had that Saturday morning, that we invite other people in and really sit down, whether we have a facilitator or not. You can call a facilitator, just a chairman of the event.
Right.
So that people are sitting in the same room, and it's not just one board talking at each, with each other saying, well, they should be doing. So that's what Judy is really talking about, and we've made a start on it. I'm breaking my arm, patting our backs here, but, you know, it's the truth. So that I just wanted to make a comment on that.
Well, that's good. I should probably acknowledge that in the report. I didn't know that you guys were actually having those meetings, so.
Oh, yeah.
If you told me, then I, it went right over my head.
Well, no, no, because it's just something we've been doing.
That's good.
And, and I think it's been quite effective so far. And the other thing, I have a question for you, Judy, is that have you, we're getting older, all we have to do is look around this room and look at all the snow tops or whitecaps or whatever the current slang is.
Q-tips.
Q-tips, okay.
I love it, it's great. I have not heard that, no.
But all we have to do is look around this community. When I first moved here, there were little kids and moms pushing strollers and everything. We're saying we've got to change housing, because we know that the vulnerable populations are not only the youth, but they are the frail elderly, as is pointed out in year Have you got any examples of communities that have, has, the communities have turned the demographic around by creating housing change? Is that something that we even have any hope of doing?
Well, I think that you do. I mean, an example that comes to mind, I'm almost afraid to mention it because it's very different from Falmouth, but I think some of the lessons learned are, are not too far afield. I've been doing a lot of work in some townships and boroughs north of Pittsburgh. And I don't know how many of you know anything about Pittsburgh, but Pittsburgh has a lot of very poor neighborhoods, and Pittsburgh's going through a renaissance. And some of those little boroughs and townships across the river look at, at a neighborhood called Lawrenceville, and they say, God, you know, just bring it here, bring it here. Total transformation of this neighborhood that was one of the poorest in the city. And I think what people don't want to understand is that it was 20 to 25 years of planning and tremendous effort on the part of community development corporations, working with the city to kind of, you know, incrementally turn things around, and also kind of getting the city to, to identi, to prioritize their neighborhood from some, for some public improvements, too. So, I mean, it is, it is a long-term thing. I just don't want to stand here and say that if you just do one X, Y, and Z, that you're somehow going to have a, a more evenly distributed demographic and a more culturally and racially representative group in your community. I'm just not gonna say that. But I do think there are tools out there that communities have used, and that's part of what I've been trying to do in the case studies in the back, is think about the tools that you can use. The, again, the local development corporation, I think, or that entity, we'll call it a trust, whatever, it's really, really important. And in their case, that's really what did it, but it was 20, 25 years in the making.
Okay. And follow-up on, on your response to that, what I was hearing, and maybe I'm interpreting it incorrectly, is a lot of what you're saying is the necessity for public-private cooperation, that it won't happen either publicly or privately. You're looking for cooperative ventures, am I correct?
Yeah, I absolutely am saying that. I absolutely am saying that, because it's probably the hardest thing you will ever do as a municipality. I'm serious, you know. There's just nothing harder than trying to turn, to change a market. You're interfering in a fundamental, you know, system that we embrace as Americans, is this free market. But we're deceiving ourselves if we think it's a totally free market. We've kind of shaped it to be what it is, and now we've got, we've got to unshape it.
Okay. Yes, Sue?
One more quick question on really the statistics.
Yep.
The, do, do the statistics show that we have more people here than homes for them? I mean.
You mean non-relative households?
Exactly.
You do have some of that here, actually, did I say something wrong?
No, I just got freezing.
Oh, oh, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to pick on you. You do have some, what the Census Bureau calls them, non, you know, households with non-relatives, or, or multigenerational families. You have some of that. I'll go back and look at that, if I think it needs to be pointed out in the report, I will. I don't recall that it was particularly significant here, relative to some other communities, but I'll look again. Because you, as a seasonal community, you know, it may be up, I usually do look at that, I looked at it here, I don't recall being struck that it was particularly significant.
Thank you. I'll look for that.
Yeah.
This report kind of makes me want to take one for the team and move off the Cape, but.
Why is that?
Because I'm one of the Q-tips now. Although I came here as a young man. But I'm on the Local Comprehensive Plan Committee, and we, one of the elements is our economic sustainability, as well as the housing and the other elements. And we've gone round and round about economic sustainability, and, and how do we attract business here that is gonna have good jobs? I mean, there are plenty of low-paying jobs that can come in with the big-box stores and, and things like that.
Right.
And it seems like, i- if we had the housing with that, what's the correlation between having the, the available housing versus bringing in jobs and economic development?
Well, I mean, certainly, any business choosing a place to locate is going to consider, what's the labor force, you know, where is it? What's the composition of the labor force, size, skill level, and where are people gonna live? And so if the labor force is, that's needed, is too small or too distant, then it becomes an impediment to attracting employers that you may want to your community.
See, what we've heard is the bridges, number one, and infrastructure.
You mean it's an impediment to housing?
It's an impediment to business.
Well, you know, I'm sure that infrastructure is an issue, and frankly, it is an issue in, in a lot of communities in central Massachusetts as well, where you have, you know, stressed basin issues going on. And so, you know, those issues are there as well. I guess what I would say to you is, focus on the things you can control, because there are a lot of things you can't. You can't change the bridge, and you probably can't change the watershed policies that you're subject to in this area. But I think to think that somehow those things are insurmountable barriers, I'm, I'm not sure that that's really the case. I think you may need to think about, well, what kinds of industries actually can you serve? And certainly, you might even, I'm sure you've probably done this already, but talk to some of your local employers, because that was one of the groups that I did meet with, and what I heard loudly and clearly was, housing's an issue here. So I don't want to tell you that somehow if you have diverse housing stocks, that all these businesses are gonna come to your town, but the absence of being able to have a stable workforce of a mix of skill levels would not be a way to attract business to your community.
And the group that we heard from that said housing wasn't a problem was the institutes, the higher end.
The ones that pay more?
Yeah, they're different, they're different animal. I mean, and that's part of what makes this kind of a unique market, too.
It skews the whole.
It does skew it, it does. I'm glad that they don't have a problem with housing, but meanwhile, the rest of your town does.
Other questions? Does anybody else have any other questions? Judy, I want to thank you tremendously. As Sue said, this is a very dense report, and everything you've put into it is one of the more useful reports I've ever seen, I think.
Thank you.
So I want to thank you very much for all of your effort on that.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. I will check the seasonal housing statistic, but I'm pretty sure it's right out of the report, but I'll check it. In any case, let me double-check the typos and so forth, and I'll get you a PDF of this, and you can circulate it as you choose.
Thank you so much, Judy.
Thank you very much.
The next thing on the agenda is future joint meeting agenda items, and when I talked with Brian earlier today, and the future joint meeting schedule, most likely, we aren't going to be able to meet until the first two weeks in December, because town meeting is coming up, and minds are bent on that, and all the energy is bent on the town meeting. But it appears to me that we'll be getting the final report from Judy, we're going to be having the roundtable on the first, and the Local Comprehensive Plan Committee has the housing element just about complete from us. We haven't shown it to the board, the planning board yet, so we'll be getting their comments, and it would seem appropriate that we focus on housing for our next joint meeting. And I'm perfectly willing, and you have other ideas, and I know Julian and Brian will get together on that, too, but it seems to me that this is hot now. We've just had all the information. So that would be an obvious topic for us. Your thoughts, please?
Sam?
I was just wondering whether we shouldn't be including the Local Comprehensive Plan as well.
Well, that's us.
Well, that we're all, one, two, three.
So, because you guys said, you're doing the Local Comprehensive Plan, and so there's a subcommittee here of the planning board that is working on it, with Marlene giving us all kinds of incredible help and guidance on it. And I know when we go too far, a field she jerks our chain back again, so that we move along fairly nicely in getting, I hope, a very useful eventual body of, of work out of this that will be used into 50 to 100 years from now. That's too optimistic, I'm sure, but we're trying for that. So, yeah, and when we're talking about housing, and we're talking about our next joint meeting, the question then is, in my mind, from what we heard tonight, too, do we want it just to be us initially, because we will be discussing this report in depth, and we will be discussing the housing element, or should we be bringing another group or two in and start that process?
I think an interesting thing, and it may be a hybrid of what you're saying, would be to ask the chairs of the involved organizations what their ideas are on coordination, stopping duplication of effort, you know, both narrowing, you know, the focus in terms of getting more efficient, and also talking about out-of-the-box ideas. So maybe you could do it with reports, or just have chairs, or, I don't know, I'm just throwing that back at you with the, you know, takeoff and re-suggestion.
Okay, to get some feedback, these two entities, to get some feedback from that in a smaller sense initially, before we open it up to.
The housing community, exactly.
Before we say, open it up to a larger workshop.
Just an idea.
I agree with that. I think at some point, you don't have as good a report at the end of a meeting with too many voices, and some that are not quite up to date with the others.
And I, yeah.
So it could be committee chair, or I think maybe we need to develop just as much between all of us here as we move to the next level. I, I think these two boards are doing very well together.
I agree.
And I wouldn't want to see, as we're expanding, that that weakens.
You know, I agree with what you're saying, that's why I'm throwing it out for discussion right now, is to, and Sue said, well, maybe just the chairman of those groups to join us, and maybe only for a certain segment of it, or just simply have a written report as to what they see.
And, and to do it in, with enough advanced notice, so that they can get some feedback from their own boards. And I just think that's such a great way to, you know, to, in terms of leadership of the planning board and, and the selectmen, to kind of show that, you know, we're, we're already getting wind in the sails from, from all of the housing community. And I, I think that's, you know, you get people on board quicker in, you know, in that manner.
Well, from now into December is enough, if we start moving in that direction, if we're looking, if we're saying we, we're looking for feedback as to how to work on this. Yes, Jim?
Well, I'd want to, I'm very happy that we're moving ahead on housing, but I, I also think we need to stay equally focused on our, some of our resiliency planning of our infrastructure and coasts, and, and our discussions, particularly with the joint meeting, with the selectmen, on some of the things that we're gonna be thinking about and bringing forward are just as important, and may even be more pressing if, depending on weather issues. So I think those are things I'd like to keep on, maybe not on the immediate, but very soon.
I, I understand.
Keep in the forefront.
No, I do understand that, and that's why I think you, Becky, said you really, two of you, I know, said you really liked that Saturday effort.
Thank you very much.
Because it was less formal, and we all spoke a little bit more freely, and mingled better, I think, and got a lot done. And I can see that as being, okay, we're talking about housing, but that has to do with resiliency, too, and that has to do with the whole infrastructure problem, and I can see that as being a focus for a Saturday workshop. I'm throwing these things out, you guys, so, not saying, oh, this is what we're gonna do, but I'm throwing them out. Yes, Sam?
I think we need to be careful about making this work also. I think we need to keep this very open, and feel like our constituents are having a voice. So I just want to be careful, because I think that some of the tension that was mentioned by Judy, we could actually, we could motivate some tension if we don't make us, make us very forced to the input of the community itself. So I just throw that out.
But that's why the input that Sue was saying.
I, I think the idea of the workshop, we could, to try to get a little bit more interactive communication about the process, the process itself, but I just wanted to throw caution.
Were you thinking I was totally talking about the workshop just being these two boards? Because I was also.
No, I, my concern is that we make sure we can keep this a very open process, and that we create enough opportunities for people to come in and speak and voice their that we create enough opportunities for people to come in and speak, and voice their concerns, and respond to those concerns, so the community feels like it's a part of this whole activity.
Yes. Something similar to what's going to happen in the library, October 1st, yes, where you get the public input on it, too.
I think maybe that might give us some more ideas after we have a public meeting, than what we have right now. Because I'm thinking also what Judy said about procedural policies or dictates that various boards use. That each board should take a look at what their procedures are, and are they friendly enough, are they open enough, are people feel comfortable, and are they too long, can they be shortened up somehow? And I think she was referring to all of us, including the CBA, where it comes to permitting. Because we do so permitting, too, and sometimes it can be owners.
Yes.
And, because it gets so complicated sometimes, that people are not sure how to proceed. I mean, I get emails, I want to be married on such and such a beach, and how do I do that? How do I do that? Though it's not really clear. But, so I think we have two tracks here. The one track is to do work, in terms of housing, and how to bring us all together so that we can formulate a plan to move forward. And the other track is, how do we work better together, and how do we do a better job with our procedures, and making them a more user-friendly for the public?
And as she also pointed out, it's a long haul. It's not an overnight thing.
The other thing I was thinking, I'm doing while this is going on, was in terms of housing, and housing policy, and we have such a huge inventory of second homes, if we're not the residential exemption, you know, where it might be, in some ways, maybe they get easier for, or maybe some way affect more year-round homeownership, rather than so many second homes. But it's another tool that you can put in the kit and see what the effect of that might be. Some other towns have used it very effectively, like Nantucket and some of the other towns, a couple of towns on the Cape, I think, various uses it now.
Her report referred to Turo and, the other one escapes me right now, it could be Province Down, that have effective programs in retaining affordable houses. And I think we need to look at those towns to see what they're doing. I don't know, because she didn't go into it.
Maybe Harwich might be one.
Maybe.
They have a very strong housing problem in Harwich.
Okay. You built a lot of Harwich.
You do, okay.
Yeah.
So...
Because the monitoring is really important, and the follow-up.
Yes. Well, and that's what she said, too. We just don't have a single monitoring entity, so...
She gave us a lot of good ideas and direction.
That's why this, this report, Sue said it's dense. Oh, yeah, it's dense with a lot of usefulness here.
This is one of the most useful ones, I think, I've ever read.
That's what I said to Brian and Marlene, too. It's really quite a great report. So, any other comments from the boards? Yes, Doug?
I'd like to also echo Sam's comment and say, I think we really need to stay focused on the coastal resiliency. If we want to have a housing meeting, that's fine, but at least we should touch base on the coastal resiliency, and make some progress at each time we meet.
And that can all be part of, of the agenda for our next joint meeting. Brian, are you taking notes?
It's our future.
Julian, are you taking notes?
With our coastal resiliency, we have no future.
No, you don't. I don't know whether people saw the Wall Street Journal on Saturday, the review section, that the climate change science is not a settled science. And this fellow has a lot of credentials behind him. And there are certain things that are unknown. A big one is that the ocean acts as a heat sink. So, we don't know. The what? The ocean. Not enough is known about the ocean. It's a heat sink.
Well, you know, I heard five or six scientists make presentations to Senator Warren about a month ago, down in its home. They had storyboards, each one, and lasted almost two hours. And it was amazing, they are now studying the ocean, they now have instruments that they can use, that will actually test what's going on in the ocean floor. And they actually showed a photograph of one of those underwater, whatever they call it, instruments, where a shark came along and just took a bite out of it. Did you see that?
Yeah, there was a picture, yeah.
Well, that was the humorous part of it. But, but actually, they were really making their pitch for their money, and they were talking about the oceans, and in terms of climate change, how, on the Pacific coast, how the waters come down toward the Antarctic, and then, you know, they're warmer, they're colder, and then they move back up to the Gulf Stream, north, to the New Zealand area. And right now, there's, and then they're supposed to get colder, and they're not. And therefore, the glaciers are melting, and all of this, and it has out cold. A lot of information that the scientists are working on to see how much that might alter the climate. But, so, it's all in the ocean studies they're doing now. It was amazing to listen to this.
That's part of it.
For almost two hours. It was just fascinating. And they are, they've been able to develop the instrumentation to study the things they need to study, to know more, and make it more of a science than what people think.
That is, that's correct, but it is not settled at this point, because we keep read about, reading about how the ice caps are melting. And this is the first time I've ever seen this stated, that Antarctica is accreting ice at the same rate that the Arctic is melting. My, one of my sisters, who delves into all kinds of things, kept telling me that, but this is the first time I've actually seen that in print. But the bottom line of that article was, just because the science is not settled, doesn't mean that we should ignore it. We've got increasing water levels. There's no question there. It's happening. We have got more severe storms, although the last three years, we probably questioned that here, because we haven't had a destructive hurricane. But we've had some pretty destructive storms along the way. So the ones we do have tend to be more destructive. And so, you can't put your head in the sand about that. So this is what we're talking about, because the coast is more vulnerable. And yes, we cannot get that lost in what we're talking about.
There's a granite wall in your pond, that actually shows the sea level rise back as thick as since 1940, and has something like eight inches of something in the pond.
Yes.
So, you know, they were places like that around.
George Apson said a book since the 40s. So, Sam?
I think we need to be careful about talking about science. Science is ever and long.
Right.
Scientists never give up trying to improve the probability of the models.
Right.
And so for somebody to point at it and say, oh, it's not settled, it's never going to be settled.
It's never, and he pointed that out, too.
That's the scientific method.
Yeah.
But, I mean, but I, you know, as a physicist, you tell me that the ocean temperatures have gone up almost two degrees Fahrenheit. That means an enormous amount of evaporation. Water vapor is stored energy in the atmosphere.
Right.
And it's got to have an impact on the weather patterns, or eventually, call it climate, is the application of all that weather activity. So fundamentally, the evidence is very strong that change has occurred.
He's not arguing that there's no change.
Where it happens and...
Right.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Get back to the agenda, please.
Yeah, well, we diverted, we diverted, because people wanted to speak about resiliency at our next joint meeting, and so we kind of went off-topic on, a little bit in advance on resiliency here. Yes, Becky?
No, no, I'm just waiting for when you're going, you're going to say about the date, and do you kind of have a final list of what we want to discuss?
Well, that was the housing.
Okay.
The housing report, and the housing element. We'll be looking for your input on that at that time, and bringing up resiliency, too, as to how it applies to a lot of stuff. So that's what we've discussed so far, and I don't know what might come up in the interim. The date would be one of the first two weeks in December, probably, but Julian and Brian will work that one out. Because it certainly cannot be until after town meeting, then we run right into Thanksgiving, so... Anything else?
Will you do it, Drew?
Thank you.
Second?
All a favor?
Aye.